Good evening, everyone. I call to order the August 20th, 2019 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine?
Here.
Garpetian? Quintero? Agajanian?
Present.
Mayor Najarian?
Here. Councilmember Devine, would you please lead us in the flag?
Please join me. Flag allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. As families across our city prepare for our new school year, let us pause this evening and reflect on the great value and sense of purpose that our schools bring to our community. Our third President of the United States, Thomas Jefferson, once said of education the following: "Enlighten the people generally, and tyranny and oppressions of body and mind will vanish like evil spirits at the dawn of day." When we pray for our community and city, let us also remember to pray for those institutions and the people who enlighten our children and help us learn and evolve into better, more compassionate civic-minded people. Let us pray for every child starting the new school year, their parents and guardians, for our teachers and administrators and supporting staff, and most importantly, let us pray for a peaceful and productive year for everyone in our jewel city. We keep in our hearts and minds those who are away from Glendale, serving in our armed forces, and pray for their safety and swift return as we continue to pray for peace here at home and around the world tonight and always. Amen.
May we have your report, please?
Agenda for the August 20th, 2019 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, August 15th, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what's the next item?
Next is Presentation and Appointments. Ria is Agenda Previews for the meetings of Tuesday, August 27th, 2019.
Mr. Galanian?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. For August 27th, 2019, for Glendale Housing Authority, we only have one business agenda, and that's a presentation from the San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity. That afternoon, there'll be a joint meeting of City Council and Housing Authority commencing at 3:00 P.M. We'll have a report from Director of Community Development regarding two property acquisitions for future development of affordable housing and a contract amendment for property appraisal, acquisition, and maintenance services. We'll also have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council commencing at 3:00 P.M. One report from Director of Community Development regarding art and entertainment district conceptual design selection. That evening, commencing at 6:00 P.M., we have three consent items from Director of Public Works, starting with grant funding for a transit fleet electrification feasibility study, followed by Public Works Department building maintenance contracts, and finally a report regarding Glendale-Los Angeles Garden River Bridge project. Under action items, there are three appointments from City Manager, appointment of one City of Glendale director to the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California Board, and another one, appointment of one City of Glendale member to the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority Commission, followed by appointment of one council member to the Independent Cities Association Board of Directors, also a report from City Manager regarding the legislative update. We also have two reports from Director of Community Services and Parks, Maple Park Playground Equipment Donation, and the Senior Services Committee Year One Update. And finally, under action items, Director of Human Resources regarding memorandum of understanding between the City of Glendale and Glendale Police Officers Association. Under hearings, we have four items related to Glendale Register nominations, reports from Director of Community, and the addresses are 1545 Virginia Avenue, 3030 Edgewick Road, 1837 Sherrill Lane, and 1521 North Columbus Avenue. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Mr. Kasakian, please reflect the attendance of Mr. Garpetian.
Noted.
Next item, please?
Item four is Consent Items Including Minutes. Following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Quintero? Agajanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Ms. Devine?
Okay, I'll begin tonight. I wanted to reflect on an event that I attended this last week at Glendale Community College. It was a graduation ceremony for a pilot program that they have, and it is a welding academy, and this was their completion ceremony. This particular boot camp for welding is attended by, made up of parolees from our county system. Parolees who are looking for a second chance at life. And they went through this boot camp. Their parole officers were there with them all the way to make sure that they got there, but it took a lot for them to commit to this program. They were all taking their tests for certification so that they could apply for jobs and make a good life for themselves. And one of them said, first of all, one in the first row was so excited with these certificates, he said he'd never gotten a certificate for anything in his whole entire life and that that meant so much to him. And he also said that, you know, "We all make mistakes, but we all deserve a good life." And it was so true. And this is one of the finest programs, I think, that Glendale Community College has, and I know that they're going to continue it, and we'll see more and more parolees take a step in the right direction to be a productive member of our society. So that was really something special. Next item I'd like to talk about, and I'm going to ask for a second from one of my colleagues. We lost Mark Sturdivan a couple of weeks ago, and he was a member of our Glendale City staff, our family, and he was very active in the community and parks, community services and parks department, getting grants for us. He worked on environmental issues, conservation issues, the Duke Magin Park. And I would like to ask one of my colleagues to second a motion or a request from me to perhaps dedicate a plaque or a bench at Duke Magin Park in Mark Sturdivan's honor. And so I would, he was, as I say, he was a fine member of our family.
I'll second that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Garpetian. So we'll look forward to bringing that back. The next item I'd like to talk about is the park, Maple Park. We attended a ribbon cutting on Saturday for a Shane's Inspiration or All-Inclusionary Park. When this item first came to council, we were asking for two parks, two Shane's Inspiration parks. Council at that time approved one of them, and now we have seen the first one, or the one that we dedicated at Maple, how wonderful it is, how excited the kids are, how happy the parents are. I even saw a parent actually go down the slide. It has all sorts of equipment there for children of all abilities. It also includes programs, clubs, field trips. The teachers in GUSD, the school district, are being taught how to use the park, facilitate the park, and to deal with their special needs kids. Glendale Community College is going to be involved in these programs. This is all included in that park. What I would like to suggest is that because at that, the first time this was brought to council for two parks, it was suggested that we do one, and for Verdugo Park to look for an alternative or another option, something similar to Shane's. What I'd like to do is revisit the idea of a second Shane's Inspiration Park at Verdugo so that we can duplicate this most successful park. And so what I'd like is for a second from one of my colleagues to, again, bring that item back, and let's look at making that second park at Verdugo a Shane's All-Inclusionary Park.
Well, I, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think for Verdugo, it is going to, we already voted on this item, and the playground that we voted for is going to be all-inclusive playground, and it's already been in works, and they've been designing it, they've been working on it, and we're going to get a report on it. It is an all-inclusive playground, it may not be called, I think Shane's changed their name as well, is that right? Is it still Shane's Inspiration?
It's a little different, yes.
Sorry?
A little different now, but it's still Shane's Inspiration.
So I think I would like to wait and see what the results of the new design is going to be, which is all-inclusive again, and then at that time, we can decide which way we want to go. But I think that that's decided already, and it is an all-inclusive.
Well, I think the idea is that if we revisit it now, that it would save going through all of the design of this other part, the other option. However, the other option is not going to include all of these programs, and we will, if we want programs like this for the second park, the city's going to have to pay for them. So Shane's includes all of these wonderful programs for kids, so I'm just asking, and perhaps when we revisit this, the other park will be, or wherever we are on it, I think the sooner we make this decision or change our decision, the easier it'll be to kind of relinquish our responsibility to an option. I don't know if Mr. Bulenikian would like to...
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Let me just say that it was nice seeing the Shane's Inspiration Park playground equipment put into use. So Shane's Inspiration is not the manufacturer, they're not even the designer, they are involved in the programming. So I would support looking again at this, seeing what additional costs Shane's Inspiration sponsorship, not sponsorship, but let's say licensing would involve as well as additional programming, and compare that to where the original direction of council was for discussion purposes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm glad Mr. Bulenikian is also here. Council gave us direction some time ago, and I don't remember the date in terms of the Verdugo Park master plan as it relates to the community room, the restrooms, the pathways, and the playground equipment, basically, and it was all-inclusive, if I remember correctly. It was not Shane's Inspiration at the time that council gave us the direction. It was to move forward with an all-inclusive playground that was at ground level, and to work through that related to other options that are out there. We are in process, I can have Mr. Bulenikian, if you know kind of where we are exactly in that process, to give you a quick update so that you all know where we are to date.
Mr. City Attorney, how are we doing?
Just real quick.
Very quick information.
This is not an agenda item, so.
Mayor Najarian, members of the council, we're currently working on the construction documents for the building, the path of travel. We have a couple vendors that we're working with for the all-inclusive ground-level playground. So that's...
That's where we are as of today. So if council wants us to bring something back, we would have to, we would have to, you know, kind of stop that process and understand where council is based on the playground piece only before moving forward, but that is completely up to the council.
Let me ask a couple of questions. Shane's Inspiration is the programming, right? They do all the programming after the equipment, the playground is built?
They do programming after the playground is built, but they also, if they do the design piece, they have some saying the design piece and...
So I think the design piece, we already voted on the way that we want it to be done. So after that is done, if Shane's Inspiration, we want them to get involved, or we want to get them involved, and as far as the programming goes, because there's no cost to the city, their programming, as I understand it, doesn't cost anything to the city, so at that point, they can, after this is designed and built, they can do their programming, you know, in conjunction with what the parks and parks department or the city wants to do. But I think we built one, let's see what the results are, it's just not the ground opening, let's see what the results are. I'm sure it's going to be very, very successful, but the one in Verdugo, the way that we voted on already, is on ground level with more play equipment for the kids, and the programming can be included in there, that's what I think.
And so I think that those are things we need to discuss and find out if, where, if any, point in this timeline Shane's Inspiration could get involved. Have we gone too far? Have we not? Can we incorporate them in any other way? And perhaps that'll be our discussion going forward. And the vote that we took several months ago does not, is not revoked, it's not rescinded, we're still on that path, but bring it to us for information and perhaps a decision as to whether we want to get this group involved in it.
Sure, we can see if they would like to...
Is that the thrust of your...
That's perfect, we can revisit it, look at both options, and then make a decision either way. Great, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One more item, please, if I may. We all received an email today, and I wanted to read it because it gives kudos to our Public Works Department, and I thought it was worthy. You know, a lot of times we get emails asking, requesting things, and sometimes we actually get kudos or thanks, and here's a great example. "I recently had my telephone poles replaced on Adams Hill. Access to my hillside yard was difficult. The young men who completed this task were exceptional." And I'm sorry, by the way, that Mr. Zern isn't here. Was it Public Works or Glendale Water and Power? Must have been, because she says Mr. Zern. Yeah? Okay. "They exercised caution with my landscaping and patio furniture. They were kind and respectful. I never heard a sharp word or a sign of nasty temperament, even on the hottest afternoon. They were professional and efficient. I would like to commend Bill Babishov, the supervisor, along with Chase, James, Zach, and Ryan, if you're watching. They deserve an award." Could you please pass this message on to Steve Zern? Thank you. So I'm passing it on to Mr. Zern, all of you, and to all the staff in our GWP. Good for you, nice job. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Carpet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to offer my deepest condolences to Mark Sturdivan's wife, family, and loved ones. I'm sorry I wasn't here to attend the funeral, and I wholeheartedly support the idea of naming a spot or a plaque after his name. As many of you know, I was in Armenia for the last couple of weeks, and there was the Pan-Armenian Games, which was well-attended. There was like 7,000 athletes came from all over the world. I think 100,000 tourists were visiting at the same time, and I was so proud to represent Glendale at the opening ceremony. I just want to report that our teams from Glendale did very well, I mean, very, very, very well, and they made us all proud. They won the championship in men's basketball as well as the women's basketball, and Mr. Mayor, they won a few medals in swimming, I think there's five of them, and table tennis, we call it ping pong, and so on and so forth. They did really well, and it was great to be there and see, half of Glendale was there, it was like deja vu, I thought I was in Glendale at one point. And these games are called Unity, Unity Games, it brings youngsters from all over the world in one point, and they get connected, they exchange information, and keep that, keep in touch in the future, which is a good thing. Also attended the Filipinos' Lual ceremony, the Fat Bax Lual ceremony last Saturday. We came back on Thursday, and from Friday was just up and running, and there's so many events we went to, I don't want to take too much time to mention them one at a time, but it's great to be back and get back to work. And, Mr. Mayor, with that, I'm done for tonight for this item.
Thank you. And I have nothing to add. Let's move on to the next item.
Next item is Community Event Announcements and Three Minute General Public Comments.
I have several cards for general public comment. First speaker is Sabrina Melora.
Good evening, my name is Sabrina Melora. I'm 12 years old, and I'm here today to talk about why I do not want Planned Parenthood in Glendale. If you recall, last week I talked about why I do not think Planned Parenthood needs charity money, and about how they made a huge profit last year in Pasadena. This connects to what I want to talk about today, how Planned Parenthood lies to their clients. The movie Unplanned, which came out last year, is a story of Abby Johnson. She was a manager for Planned Parenthood for eight years, but no longer works for them. In the movie, she shares about Planned Parenthood, how Planned Parenthood lies to their clients and manipulates them so they have an abortion. They do this by telling them that the baby, which Planned Parenthood states on their website is a pregnancy or a fetus. They never call it a baby to humanize it so women don't get attached and don't have a problem getting an abortion. They say the fetus is a ball of tissue and does not at all resemble a human. If you look at this baby, which is an exact model of a 10 to 12-week-old fetus, which is the common age a baby is aborted, and you can clearly see it has fingers, toes, a nose, it is a perfectly formed little human. This proves that they lie because they want to make a profit. They manipulate the woman to have an abortion, which costs $350 to $950 for first trimester abortion. Clearly, they don't care about their women, just money. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Melora?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I applaud you, I'm so delighted to hear about Shane's Inspiration. I have worked with them for more than a decade, I support them wholeheartedly because they are truly devoted to children of all abilities. Unfortunately, that is why Planned Parenthood should not be in Glendale, because the type of babies that benefit from Shane's Inspiration, babies of different abilities, children of different abilities that are beautiful, children who bring a lot of joy to their families, are often the target of Planned Parenthood. In the news yesterday, it was announced that Planned Parenthood decided to opt out of Title X funding, and that means that they gave up $60 million of funding. They still receive close to $500 million of federal tax money, so that $60 million is really not a big amount of money relative to that other amount. They did that because they did not want to separate the services that they provide under Title X from abortion. Abortion is how Planned Parenthood makes their money. Title X wanted them to not refer, Title X funding does not go to medical offices that refer patients to abortion or provide abortion services in the same facility. In choosing to opt out of Title X funding, Planned Parenthood made it very clear that they will choose abortion, that that is their primary business. So clearly, Shane's Inspiration and Planned Parenthood do not belong in the same city. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Dimitra Vena?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. My name is Dimitra Vena, and I am here, standing here, as a Christian and in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. I've spent a tiring eight-and-a-half years as a sidewalk counselor in front of the FPA Family Planning Associate on Arden Street. So I stand here today, I oppose Planned Parenthood from opening facility in the city of Glendale, California. I would like to elaborate next time, God willing, if I'm here, how Planned Parenthood exploits our teens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susan Wolfson?
Good evening, council members and staff. Thank you for letting us have a moment to talk to you. I came in last week and talked about traffic concerns that I have, and I wanted to get back to you because I did a little more digging, and I did find that the last time the city performed a citywide traffic study that included counts from all areas of the city, not a, you know, a specific area relative to a particular project or whatever, but the entire city. The last time that was done was in 1978, and so I'm hoping that information will be helpful to you in deciding to do one again. I'm hoping that we'll do one again. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Lenore Solis?
Good evening, council members. My name is Lenore Solis, and I'm a resident of Glendale. I'm here to thank the city and especially the staff at Pacific Community Center. We had a wonderful 10th year of our National Night Out. Paula Devine was there, thank you, Councilwoman, and Aaron Najarian, I believe you were there. And we had several dignitaries, our chief of police, but what was wonderful is we had a well-attended event, and it was so wonderful to see so many of our police officers and firefighters interacting with our children in the community. That's exactly what we want. We want them to feel comfortable enough, parents, non-English speaking, monolingual, whatever language speaking, they were all interacting with our firefighters and our police officers, and that was really a wonderful thing to see. The whole point of this event is to bring the neighbors together. A lot of kids were talking about school's going to start, and parents were asking a lot of questions. We tried to play games, we gave out 300 hot dogs in about 30 minutes, we have fruit, you know, and we have a lot of community resource tables, thanks to the staff at the park. They've taken over that role of contacting various organizations to provide community resource tables, and there had to be at least 20 tables there with a lot of giveaways. And we had a church that's on Pacific Avenue, and they, this is their fifth year there, and they gave out backpacks with school supplies and popcorn and raspadas, or in English, I guess, snow cones, and the kids were just really excited to get those backpacks, and I wasn't expecting them to have backpacks with school supplies, so that was really a wonderful opportunity for those kids in that low-income area to be able to get the resources that they may not have the money to purchase. So I just want to thank the staff, you know, I'm so happy to see, you know, Oleg Bulenikian is the director now of our department handling parks and community services. I met him there 10 years ago at our first event, he was working at that park, and he was so wonderful, reaching out to so many, you know, people in the Armenian community that I really didn't have contact with, and every staff member, I mean Norma, I mean Jackie, I mean everyone, Zevaga, everybody that has been there that I've worked with over the years, all the staff, they're just so wonderful and so helpful, and, I mean, no matter what happens, it's like they're there to take care of it and to help me, hold my hand, it's just really, really wonderful. And I just really want to thank the city for always partnering with us, because if you didn't partner with us to do that, we could never do it. Thank you so much. Now I want to talk about the possibility of Planned Parenthood moving to the city of Glendale. Many of you may know, I'm a devout Catholic, and I believe in the life from conception to natural death, and we do have a clinic on Arden, and I've been playing at that clinic since my son was about eight years old, he's 34 now. And I think it's really important that we remember that this is the jewel city, it's a wonderful family environment, and I don't think we need a second abortion clinic. Thank you.
Thank you. Ara Menugian?
Good evening.
Good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor. Today I come to you as an investigative journalist and human rights activist, as well as a frequent patron of the city of Glendale. There's been recent discussion, and there was recently a town hall meeting discussing the implementation of a 5G cellular network in the city of Glendale, and this is something that's going to be coming up to vote for the city of Glendale to make approvals for licenses to implement this type of network in the city of Glendale. Today, in front of you, I think, I brought nine copies, I don't know if they were passed out or not, but you have this book, yes. Okay, so last week, an emergency, urgency ordinance on telecommunications was presented by somebody, it's an example of what Mill Valley did to protect its citizens against the dangers of 5G. And for those that don't know what 5G is, it's basically, it's a high-speed communication network, but the downfall of it is, it's basically like having a microwave oven turned on with the door open and continuously going in your neighborhoods. Every 500 feet would have a cell tower, which is giving off radiation. This booklet that I present to you today are the facts about 5G and the dangers that it can cause, and if you look in the book, you'll see the first four pages are an introduction basically to the overview of the effects to human life. Now, this is not something you can consider when you make your decision, by the way, of whether or not you're going to allow 5G network in. The Mill Valley document is what you are entitled to, you are allowed to do in terms of protecting the citizens against 5G. You can't consider health issues, but you should know about the health issues, because this is really the biggest part of this that we have to be concerned about. So there's an appendix of the table, there's all these documents in this book, and the first part is human evidence testimonial of what the problems can be. There's specific California evidence of why we shouldn't have 5G yet, because again, we don't know what the real health effects are, we only know what the current studies have been, and the telecommunications companies have not invested any money in doing studies, just like the tobacco companies did studies and hid them. Telecommunication isn't doing it because if they find out what the dangers are, they're going to be held liable later on. So right now, we are all human guinea pigs, which is actually a violation of our human rights. We are not, we cannot be used as guinea pigs, but in this sense, we are. So I'm going to wrap it up here, and I'm going to encourage the City Council to read this document, cover to cover, and educate yourself on what we are going to be exposing the citizens of Glendale and those that come to Glendale to. This is very dangerous, this is not something I would think you would want your children or grandchildren to be exposed to, as I wouldn't either, or anybody would. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for the City Manager or the City Attorney. I received a couple of, few emails regarding this issue, and I think the misinformation out there is that we already voted on this item, and it's coming, it's came and gone. Just wanted to know, what the gentleman indicated, maybe you can get a report on, not on a staff level, or maybe on an email base, about the Mill Valley and what they've done. I know it's in Marin County, is that the town that you were talking about?
Right, and yeah, we can provide some information on that, for sure. My understanding is, up until September of last year, Mill Valley didn't actually have any ordinance that regulated wireless telecommunications facilities, and actually Glendale has been, was one of the leaders in adopting one of the earliest regulations, comprehensive regulations affecting wireless telecommunications. So, but we're still in the process of looking at what Mill Valley did, but from my understanding, all it did was adopt comprehensive regulations affecting wireless telecommunications facilities.
Because we have three cell towers, I voted against all three of them, one was in Babe Herman Park, Freeman Park, and if I'm not mistaken, the third one was in New York, but those are the, those were the large towers, cell towers. Okay, if you can get those information, I would appreciate it.
We will provide that information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lance Fain, can you turn down the, make it a little bit cooler in the room? It's a little bit, getting a little bit warm. Okay, that is the last card I have for this portion of oral communications. We will move on to the next item.
Under hearings, 9A is Director of Community Development regarding public hearing on consideration of decision of a denial of the appeal of parcel map number 1631, GLN 1631, and parcel map located at 2116 Rimcrest Drive, and to hear the appeal anew. 9A1 is motion to rescind October 10, 2017 City Council decision, upholding the Planning Commission's decision to deny parcel map. Two is a resolution adopting a negative declaration for the parcel map project. Three is a motion to grant the appeal, approve the parcel map, and reverse the Planning Commission's December 7, 2016 denial of the parcel map. Four is a motion to sustain Planning Commission denial of the parcel map, GLN 1631, and directing the City Attorney to prepare required findings, including any findings required by government code 65589.5.
Thank you. Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we'll go directly to City Attorney Mike Garcia.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, before Mr. Collin from Planning Department or Planning Division makes a presentation on the case, I, per your request, give a brief procedural history of how we got to this point. In September of 2017, the council held a public hearing on this parcel map, which is a three-law subdivision at the subject property of 2116 Rimcrest. Council at that time upheld the Planning Commission's denial of that parcel map and denied the project. Subsequent to that, the property owner, Mr. Boniati, challenged the city's denial in Superior Court. In February of this year, the Superior Court issued a writ of mandate ordering the city to set aside its decision and finding that the decision was not supported by the record that was before the council. That decision, a copy of that decision is in your packet, but in essence, what the court held was that the city's reliance on the Hillside Design Guidelines for the denial was not supportable. The court ordered, in addition, to set aside the council reconsider's decision, and that in its reconsideration, if it was inclined to deny the project again, that it also comply with the Housing Accountability Act, which requires the council to make additional findings when a project is consistent with the general plan, municipal code, and subdivision standards that, like this project is, that requires the project, or makes findings that the project would be adverse to public health or safety. So there was a second phase of that litigation, which is typical in a land use context, but prior to proceeding to that additional phase, the parties decided that it was prudent for the council to hold that hearing on reconsideration, and to seek the council's review of the case again, for it to consider the case before it, and consider whether or not to prove there is a proposed settlement that would go forward if the council were to approve the project, but in essence, this is a discretionary project, and the council is not required to approve the hearing tonight. But it is, if it does deny it, is required to make findings beyond those that it made in September 2017, and if asked, I will answer what our thoughts are on that. And in addition, the council would be required to make the findings required by the Housing Accountability Act. And with that, I'll submit it to, back to you, Mr. Mayor, to open the hearing. I would ask, actually, Mr. Mayor, members of council, that if we, council can make the motion at 9A1 to begin with, that puts the case back into the council's jurisdiction to consider the case, that's just rescinding the prior approval, and then if council's inclined to deny it a second time, then it can do so by making the findings, or making the motion at 9A4.
Okay, I will open the hearing, and I will ask for a motion at 9A1.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Agajanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Ms. Beers, who's going to take over now?
Mr. Collin from Planning.
Mr. Collin, from Planning, will make the presentation at this point, if you're ready, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. This is a hearing for reconsideration of a City Council denial of August 29, 2017, for a parcel map request to subdivide one residential lot, the average current slope that exceeds 30% into three residential lots and develop a single-family dwelling in each of the two vacant lots at 2116 Rimcrest Drive. Property is zoned R1R, which is considered restricted residential zone. The site is generally bounded by Aspen Oak on the south, Rimcrest Drive on the east. The site has a slightly less than 10,000 square feet, contains one single-family residence, which will remain. Proposed lot areas would vary from about 29,000 square feet to about 35,000 square feet. The slide before you is basic history on the project, as you can see, it's been before both Planning Commission and City Council a couple of times. As Mr. Garcia had mentioned, these are the reasons that it is back before the council The subject property was created through a series of subdivisions resulting in a large lot located, as mentioned, at 2116 Rimcrest, which fronts on Aspen Lane, Aspen Oak Lane, The two new lots slope up, as mentioned, approximately 100 feet from Aspen Oak Lane to the north of the site. The code requires that the average lot area be 30,000 square feet. The proposed project complies with this. In addition, the proposed lot areas must not be less than the average lot area within 500 feet of the property. In this case, the average lot area is 22,000 square feet. The proposed project complies with this requirement as well. This is a view of the three lots. This is the subject house that's currently on the property now off of Rimcrest, and a view of the properties looking from the south to the north. These are the three lots with approximate footprint or shape of the properties, and views from Lot 1 looking up from Aspen Oak, Lot 2, and Lot 3. This is a view of the proposed perspective of the house that would be located on Lot 2, another view of it, a view of the prospective house on Lot 3, and a view of both homes, again, looking from the south to the north. The Planning Commission's reasons for denial were that they felt that Lot 3 did not comply with the Hillside Design Guidelines and did not follow the slope. Commission also believed that the project was not consistent with the general plan land use element. The appellant's main arguments were the fact that the subject parcel map complies with all the required regulations in the zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, the general plan, and the Hillside Design Guidelines. Staff believes the subject parcel map application is in compliance with the zoning ordinance, the general plan, and the Hillside Design Guidelines. Staff is recommending that the council reverse the Planning Commission's decision and approve the parcel map 1631. concludes my presentation, I'm available for questions, thank you.
Just two additional points, one is there was a revised motion at 9A3, which is, would be the motion to approve the project, and the council saw inclined, and in addition, point out that this approval is for the subdivision, which creates the two additional lots, the construction of the two additional homes will be subject to the city's design review process.
And also, the environmental would have to be adopted.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of our planner? If not, I do have several cards. We can do three minutes on each one. First speaker is Kurt Nelson. Yes.
Might be appropriate to let Mr. Boniati as representatives go first, there's still the appellant in this case with the burden.
Mr. Boniati, who is, who from your team will come? I can give you 10 minutes. You'd like to go first, otherwise I can just put you through the regular...
Thank you, Mayor Najarian. I will do a very short presentation, then I will ask for the rest of my time to be reserved for my attorney's rebuttal.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Boniati, how much time approximately total?
I would need probably about two minutes right now. Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, thank you for hearing my appeal. I ask you to pay attention to the staff report that has been always consistent for the last eight years, that this project meets the general plan and design guidelines, and has been recommending approval of this project for the last eight years. With that, I, you know, my civil engineer, Serge Adamian, is here, if you have any questions from him. My architect, Hamlet Zorabian, is here for any questions that you may have from him, and of course, my attorney Lisa Weinberg is here as well.
I'm going to go back into the order of the cards. Kurt Nelson, followed by Niles Desai.
Good evening, Kurt Nelson, 54 Rosenloom Irvine. Some of you I saw before at the original hearing, I'm going to try to be as brief as possible, you've seen, some of you were here, you remember the details. Couple of quick questions, please, for the City Attorney. I read the, I just found out about this last night, I kind of speed-read the court decision. Does the court's decision and the mandate to reconsider this remove the discretion from the City Council unless they can make an explicit finding that this project is going to be a detriment to the health and welfare of the populace? Because I'm confused as to whether, I'm familiar with the law, which is supposed to promote affordable housing, and there's an irony in that, but do they still have discretion if their opinion should be that this is bad planning, or is there only that one finding they can make, or else the city's hands are trumped by state law? I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, my question would be for, suggestion would be for the speaker to finish his comments, I can answer any questions at the end of his comments.
Why don't you throw out any questions you have, and then when your time is up?
That was my question.
That's all you have?
No. Okay, the second question would be, what I read in the court decision was that there was no substantial evidence presented that there had ever been, and the staff was unfamiliar, that there had ever been a prohibition or a bar on further subdivision of those lots. I was there, I built, my company rather, built the homes along Aspen Oak for most of the people that are here tonight. I asked the question of Gerald Jamriska, then the Planning Director. We were told in no uncertain terms that those lots had been created, as large as they were, to dispose of almost a quarter million cubic yards of excess fill, that the original developer, not me, miscalculated. Now, so, I have minutes, again, I found out about this, I haven't shredded them yet, I thought this was over, I have minutes from the 1979 City Council hearing that gave birth to parcel map 1355, and in it, then Bob Garson, John Day, that council said, okay, you can develop your tract through recording this 1355A parcel map. These big parcels will be one home each. Dispose of your quarter million cubic yards of dirt, it'll be heavily landscaped and maintained by you and then later by others as open space. I don't know whether you need an explicit wording, this can never be subdivided, but it's kind of implicit, and I'm happy if you don't make a decision tonight, bring that back and show you the, the staff can find them, I got them out of your microfiche a couple of years ago. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, do you care to answer any of those questions?
If the council would like me to.
Yes, why don't you please answer?
Okay, so to the extent, I know, and we address them, and so the court's decision, I don't want to speak too much to it because it speaks for itself, it's in the report. We do have to make findings, that there's a provision of the subdivision statute, we have to make one of those findings to deny the project, it could be based on Hillside Design Guidelines, but the court found that in the case that... case that we, the basis we used on the hillside design guidance was not sufficient. In addition, the Housing Accountability Act, which is the statute, I think the gentleman was referring to, that I had referred to earlier, section 65589.5 of the government code, applies to both affordable projects and, and nonaffordable projects. When a project is consistent with the general plan, the city zoning code, and any other applicable codes, if a city proposes to deny such a project, it must make the requisite findings that denial of the project, one of the findings that it could make, and the most, the only one that might even arguably be applicable here, is that the project would have a substantial adverse impact on health or safety. And it's health or safety, not health, safety or welfare, which is broader by law. And, you know, from our, from our viewpoint, both, I can't speak for the planning division, but our, from our viewpoint, you wouldn't be able to necessarily make that finding. It'd be very difficult. But that's, that's where that finding comes from. As it relates to the history of the creation of this lot, our understanding is that, that the gentleman's explanation of how this lot was created, there is factual basis for that opinion. But the record is clear, there's no restriction on the re-subdivision of that lot, if you will. There's no restriction on the development of that additional space. And we have dealt with together other subdivisions where properties, lots were created and, and the development rights were expressly restricted pursuant to either a covenant or the subdivision. You might recall the litigation we've dealt with where we were successful because such a restriction was imposed. And in this case, there isn't a restriction. There's nothing legally, there's no legal requirement that prevents either the re-subdivision of this lot, which I'm now even sure that would be enforceable, or any other sort of covenant that restricts the development rights on this parcel. So, you know, although this, the history of how this lot was created may be accurate, it doesn't impose a restriction on the development of that property.
Thank you.
My name is Niles Desai, and I live on 132 Aspen Oak Lane. And we have been battling this for the last 12 years, since 2012. My first appeal to you is please postpone this hearing until the next council meeting because we were given notices too late, we had only five days to prepare, and the legal briefings were posted only a couple of days ago. So we need some more time to argue our case. Two planning commissions and two council has ruled in favor of us. And I think you should also continue to oppose this project, but we need some more time for preparation. If we have been doing this for 12 years, few more days or weeks is not going to change anything. The hill will be still there, we will still be the residents, and applicant is still going to be here. So I respectfully urge you to postpone the vote and the hearing.
Okay. If you concluded your comments.
If you do not postpone, then I will come back to argue again.
Well, you have three minutes. You know, you don't put us on the spot and tell us what we're going to do, sir. So you have three minutes.
Okay. I would like to show some photographs of how this hill was cut and developed. And you will see my residence, 132 Aspen Oak. As mentioned earlier, there was nothing on this hill when we moved in in 1984. There were only two or three houses on that street. Everything we have put up with, the whole development of the track. And we did not comment for, or object anything. This parcel, right across from our house, was dirt-filled by the miscalculation, and it's an engineered hill. There is a stipulation in the CCNRC that it will not be subdivided. No grading should be changed, no drain should be altered, not even a treehouse could be created. I had the opportunity to buy that lot, but we will promise that nothing will come across your street. And that is documented. It is not hearsay. And now we are here again repeatedly for arguing the same situation. So I would request you to deny the project, and if not, please postpone it so that we can prepare our case better. Thank you.
Arthur Ilangezian.
Good evening, dear mayor and council members. I would like to join my dear neighbors in respectfully requesting a continuance of this matter, at least a discussion, further discussion and voting on this matter till the next city council hearing, to allow us a reasonable opportunity to get well-informed about the facts and circumstances as they are right now, and to get prepared to present our opposition prepared for this matter. We would really appreciate it, and again, respectfully requesting the continuance. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Lisa Weinberg is on the team, so we'll reserve your, put your card to the end.
Good afternoon, city council. Thank you for your service to our city. Like my neighbors said, we have been fighting this for a long time. And Mr. Boniati is a formidable opponent. I tell you that much. He's aged my life by many, many years. He has rubbed our neighbors the wrong way. From day one, he's been playing dirty, trying to get old women to sign documents. They don't know what they're signing. He tried to paint us neighbors with an evil brush at the end of the last council hearing, saying that we're building our homes without permits. He acts like a good guy when he wants to act like a good guy. And then he sues the city when he doesn't get his way. Twice, we've had the city council vote, twice they have voted on our side. This has been a long, hard battle. We've had many meetings. We've raised funds. It's not easy. There's many of us. And some of us are not as financially well-off as Mr. Boniati is. Seven years ago, he said he wanted to build these homes for his daughters. I don't know about you, but I don't know any woman that's going to wait seven years for their house. Okay? So why does he want these lots? Because they're very valuable. But just like the planning commissioner said the first time, she said she went up the hill and she looked at it, and she said, houses don't belong here. They just don't look like they belong here. I kindly ask all of you to extend us the courtesy, please, to postpone this hearing. Let us get some legal counsel. I read in the court ruling that the city attorney was not well-staffed, or the city was not well-staffed, and it seems to me like they really didn't put up much of a battle or much of an argument. We'd like to know what the city's argument was. We would like to know how he won this lawsuit. It happened without us knowing. We didn't know about it. It was a surprise to us. And we'd like to also have Mr. Frank Cantaro's vote on this as well, because at the first city council hearing, he was adamantly against this. So as a courtesy to your colleague, I kindly ask you guys to wait at least until he's back on the panel. I don't know what else to say, but just, you know, like I said, we have put a lot of time into this, too. A lot of time and energy. It's not right. What he's trying to do is not right. He's got plenty of money. He'll be fine. He can buy a house somewhere else. There's plenty of homes. He's got plenty of money. I wish him all the success in the world. But what he's trying to do here is wrong. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia? I'm going to give you a chance to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Stand up for the integrity of your department.
Yeah, so I had two, actually, my two chief assistants, my two number twos, were involved in this case personally, so I don't know where the statement is coming from that we were not prepared, or we vigorously defended the city's interest in this lawsuit. The court just felt differently on the legal principle. And I'm happy to share our corporate views that we submitted on this case. I think we did an outstanding job. It's just, it's a difficult case, and as I've explained to the council, and I'm 100% behind our office on handling of this case.
Well, the issue of a continuance may be made by motion of anyone on the dais. Is that correct?
That's correct.
For the vote of the council.
The only thing I would point out that pursuant to the agreement is, it does require consent with Mr. Boniati as well, because it was part of the discussion to have a hearing on a certain date. We've actually continued it a couple of times from them. I would also note, just in, for purposes of the postponement or the notice issue, we, you know, obviously, the mailed property notice, mailed notice was sent to all property owners within 500 feet, within the time required by the statute, as well as newspaper notice, as well as two separate postings on the site, one facing Rimcrest and one facing Aspen Oak. In fact, I think that one of the commenters who requested the postponement acknowledged that, that he saw the sign, but just chose not to read it. So I'm not really sure that postponement is necessary, but it is within the council's purview, subject to discussion with Mr. Boniati if he so chooses.
Okay. So if anyone from council is willing to start this two-part process, now may be a good time. If not, I'm going to continue with cards.
Good evening. I am Bessie Marterosian. I am resident of 120 Aspen Oak Lane, and I really want to join all my neighbors to postpone this process. This is shameful process. It's not going to go any further, and we are going to be against it. All neighborhood is against it. We need environmental studies. We need to hire new people to do appropriate studies. We have legal issues with this court document. We need to pursue this. I urge you, I ask you to postpone this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rita Iskandarian, and I live in 114 Aspen Oak Lane. I've been living in this street for more than 35 years, and we are battling this case for eight years. When I saw the sign just last week, it's not enough time for us to prepare ourselves. We don't know what's going on. So please postpone this vote that you are going to vote, all of us, all of you, against this. And all I'm asking is give us some time to prepare. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city councils. I live, my name is Tanya Mata. I live at 140 Aspen Oak Lane. We've been there for almost 12 years. And like my neighbors, I'd like to join and plead for postponement if possible. We really didn't have the chance. I received this letter, even though it's dated August 13, I just received it yesterday in the mail. And it talked about coming to the hearing today. Luckily, I was able to make it here today. But the billboard has been posted way up on the hill. Even though those two homes are going to be built pretty much right across from my home, the billboard is way up. If I don't drive all the way up to the cul-de-sac, I wouldn't be able to see it. Luckily, my neighbor called me and told me about it. But if she hadn't called me, I wouldn't have been able to see the billboard either. So if it wasn't for this letter, I really didn't know what was going on. So we really need more time. We really would appreciate the time if possible, if you could please postpone this. Thank you.
Can we see that envelope, please?
Would you mind giving the envelope to our clerk, please? I don't have any other cards. Did anyone else submit a card? And did I fail to call your name? What is your name, sir?
Larry Cohen.
Larry Cohen. Come forward, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you. My name is Larry Cohen. My wife and I bought our house in Glendale in 1975. We've lived in the same house right near Hoover High School, Keppel Elementary, and Toll Middle School since 1975. I've been a long-term ham radio volunteer to the city of Glendale, and I'm very familiar with radio frequency issues. And I want to say that I support the deployment of, of cell phone towers. The radiation that comes from a cell phone tower is not dangerous. It's not harmful. This is not ionizing radiation. Anybody who has Wi-Fi in their home, they have routers, modern routers are both 2.4 and 5 gigahertz. It's a not-harmful radiation.
Let me interrupt you, Mr. Cohen. I'm getting the gist of your comments. Are you here to address the lot subdivision?
No.
Okay.
No. Have nothing to do with that.
Okay. So you are going to speak in the next agenda item, and that's general public comment.
Okay.
So sorry about that confusion. So have a seat, and we'll call you up for that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Unless there's a cell tower planned for that lot. And I hope, let's, I hope we don't go there. Okay. So I don't have any other cards. It's open for discussion now.
Mr. Mayor, Mr., Ms. Weinberg, the applicant's attorney, wanted to speak on rebuttal.
Correct. Ms. Weinberg.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members. Good evening. I am Lisa Weinberg, council for Rick Boniati, the appellant and applicant for the subdivision. Thank you for your time tonight. This case does come to you in an unusual procedural posture. You've all had the benefit of a court's review of the entire record before you are now reconsidering the matter. Usually, a matter comes up before you, and you have to guess what a court might do if it's going to look at it, if it's challenged. This time, we know. And in this case, the court had before it the entire administrative record from 2012 through 2017, both times when this project was placed before the city. The court saw the transcripts from every hearing, both Planning Commission and City Council. The court read all of the submissions about the project, all of the staff reports that were made, all of the comments of the city attorney, the planning director, et cetera. The court read all of the testimony by the public about the project in such detail that the court noted in its decision that the transcript attributed one comment to Mr. Iskandarian when actually it appeared that it was made by the previous speaker and the court reporter had made an error. So the court did a very careful review of every piece of evidence that was submitted. Based upon that, the court found that there just was not substantial evidence in the record before the city at any point that would support the denial of the project, because the law makes very specific requirements for what the findings must be if you are going to deny. Today, we've heard from five or six people, five people in the community, and Mr. Nelson yet again. None of them have stated anything new. There was no evidence submitted tonight that was different from or additional to any evidence that the court already considered. So based upon the court's ruling, it is now, you do have your discretion to act. I'm not going to say that you don't. But I can't see where there would be any evidence before you that would justify a denial of the parcel map now under these procedural circumstances. I would just like to state, too, that in the litigation, both sides, both my office and the city attorney's office advocated very forcefully for our clients. It was a hard battle. And I have great respect for the city attorney's office. It was a hard battle, and I have great respect for the city attorney's office and the work that they did. They made every argument available to justify the decision by the council, but nevertheless, having reviewed the entire record, the court made distinctions between opinions and factual evidence and found that there wasn't factual evidence in the record to support the denial. So because we are now in this situation and because by voting to approve the project, we'll actually be able to reach a resolution of the entire lawsuit, including claims for damages against the city, I urge you strongly to support the recommendation of your staff, to heed the counsel of your city attorney, and to please vote to reverse the Planning Commission's decision and to approve the parcel map and to adopt the negative declaration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think that is the last speaker. I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion by my colleagues.
A question from...
Yes, Mr. Agajanian.
Here has been said, as it's in record, twice this project has been denied by the city, right?
Correct.
And so the court, what the court ordered in brief?
Sure, in brief, the court issued a writ of mandate, which is basically an order invalidating the city's prior denial, the city council's prior denial, and ordered, once the remaining causes of action are resolved, ordered, will order the council to set aside its denial, have a new hearing, reconsider the case in light of its decision, and also require the council to make additional findings under the Housing Accountability Act, which the city did not make when it denied the project in 2012 and 2017. And that's where we are, we are here today.
And one more question. Let's assume, we say, one way or another, let's say we say we go ahead with the project the way it has been represented, presented here. Can the, those who are against it, to get an attorney and stop this project again for the court review or any other possible issue to stop this?
Sure, I can't give legal advice to any third party, but any decision of a city council is subject to judicial review, meaning is subject to legal challenge.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I just want to say that I find it, if I may, Mr. Mayor, that I find it a little disheartening that the courts would say that they base their, that we were basing our decision on opinions and not facts, but I would think that, you know, kind of disregarding our guidelines, and I find that a bit disheartening as well. But that's all I'm going to say.
Any other comment? I will be brief. I've been on both sides of this issue back in 2000, I've been here long enough to have been on both sides of this. In 2012, I voted to approve. In 2017, after listening to the arguments of the residents opposed, I was against. And the case went to a judge, and the judge said that the arguments that many of us made, I don't want to single anyone out in particular, were not based on sufficient substantial evidence. So the judge said, Glendale City Council, you did not have your arguments supported by substantial evidence. And that's, I can assure you that our city attorney and his staff fought very hard to maintain our integrity of our deliberations and the decision that came forth from this council, but it just didn't. The judge said that the Hillside Design Guidelines and the Housing Accountability Act led him to reject our analysis and the reasons that we gave for that analysis. And, you know, I see the writing on the wall. The judge did not order this city council to reverse and to act in any one way, but he's pretty, they pretty much shot down all the arguments that we used in the 2017 hearing, and those were some pretty strong arguments by each and every one of us. And I thought I had given some very sound, technical, and substantial arguments, but the judge and his, in his decision, went through each and every council person's and mayor's reasoning and pretty much just chopped it down. So unfortunately, I don't, I don't have any other evidence that I can throw in that I didn't use last time, and I can see writing on the wall. I could choose to ignore that writing. I could choose to be, subject the city to further litigation, expensive litigation that may end up where we are today at the end of many months, if not years, plus with a whopping legal bill. So if someone would like to make a motion...
If we can, if I could, just ask for a motion separately on 982 and 983. 982 is the secret document, 983 is the approval as revised.
Okay, so, so those who support the subdivision to three lots, if someone would make a motion at 982, which is adopting the negative declaration for the parcel map. This doesn't approve any home design. This doesn't approve any grading design. This only approves the dividing of that large parcel into three lots. Is there a motion at 982?
9... A, oh, 9A123?
So we did, we did 9A1 already. That was rescinding what the Planning Commission did.
Right, exactly. So 982?
Correct.
I would entertain the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Motion was made by Councilmember Agajanian, seconded by Garpetian. Council members, divine.
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Agajanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. 983 is the motion to grant the appeal and to approve the parcel map and to reverse the Planning Commission's denial of the parcel map.
I will again entertain the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are we mixing up our voting yet, or we're not doing that? We are, we're rotating the...
Yeah, rotating. Just happens to be that. Councilmember Agajanian is also mayor pro tem.
Okay, no, I'm just asking, just in these tense votes, I know that we are, you know, I mean, this is where it would make a difference in some cases. But I'm sorry, go ahead, roll call, please.
Yeah, again, just for clarification, just the order this year, this month is the same as it's always been, that's why. Next month, they'll be different.
Oh, it's by monthly, okay, thank you.
Based on who's a pro tem.
And we always will have the pro tem before the mayor. Motion was made by Councilmember Agajanian, seconded by Garpetian. Council members, divine.
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Agajanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Thank you. That concludes this item. Next item, please.
Next item is oral communications. Discussion is limited. Time is not a part of this agenda. Speaker has a lot of five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. Same as your mayor for the matter to the appropriate department for investigation or report.
Now, I'm happy to call up Mr. Larry Cohen. You had a dry run earlier.
I pretty much said everything I was gonna say, but I just want to say that...
Hold on a second. Folks, if we could, please keep it quiet. We still have some business.
I very much appreciate the ability to stand before the council and make some of my comments. The 5 gigahertz cell sites, that's, that's a frequency, and the power from those cell sites is very, very low, and it has not been shown by any studies to be harmful to anyone. And the microwave oven that I have at home does not operate at a 5 gigahertz frequency. It operates at 2.4. And my router, my Wi-Fi router in my house has both 2.4 and 5 gigahertz radios in it, and those are not harmful in any way to the human cells. It's what they call non-ionizing radiation, which means that they do not damage human cells. The sun is ionizing radiation. You go out and get exposed to ultraviolet radiation from the sun, you can develop skin cancer because that is ionizing radiation. So are X-rays. Those can damage cells, but the radio frequencies in question cannot. So I have no objection to cellphone towers being located wherever they can be located other than perhaps an aesthetic issue. They're not harmful. The power from cellphone sites are very, very small, and so I, I'm in favor of robust cellular communications. The modern world is, is just blanketed with communication through cellphone sites, and it's becoming increasingly valuable and necessary to have that kind of communication network. So thank you very much.
You have raised some interesting points, and I think my colleagues would like to discuss.
I would like to ask first, maybe you have said before, I didn't hear it, what's your profession, please?
Well, I'm semi-retired.
What's your expertise?
I'm, I'm, my expertise, I'm a ham radio operator licensed by the FCC. I've been providing ham radio volunteer communications to the city of Glendale since the mid-1990s, and we, as ham radio operators, we have to study the effects of radio waves, and we have to do a survey of our ham radio antennas to make sure that people can't get too close to them because there are high voltages on those antennas, and if somebody were to touch them when I press the, push the talk button to talk, there's very high voltages, somebody could get a radio frequency burn on their fingers or their hand if they touched the antenna. But there's no harm in the radiation. In fact, the ham, the radio towers on Mount Wilson, some of those television towers and radio towers, they put out power at 50,000 watts, and there's no harm to us from that. Thank you.
Ms. Divine?
There's been a question about, or a concern about the height of these cells. Do you have any comment on that, or do you have any expertise on that?
Well, the, the higher the cell, the lower the exposure to the radiation.
Right.
If you increase the distance by twice from the antenna, you're reducing the power by one-fourth. It's the inverse to the square, so...
It's kind of common sense. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
You're welcome.
Anahit Dermagardichian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. My name is Anahit Dermagardichian. I have two kids who go to Toll and Hoover High, Hoover High School and Toll Middle School. As a parent, I just learned about this proposed project of 5G towers because GUSD has not informed the parents, so there are thousands of parents that don't know about this. Only handful of parents know about this, and that's why you didn't see any parents coming to the meeting, I guess, did the hearing, the beginning of this month, because nobody knows about this. So I'm here to ask the city council, what does it take for the city to oppose to the location of these two towers, which are really, right next to the schools, three schools, thousands of children will be exposed? Why do we want to put our childrens to this harm's way? We don't know, we don't have enough information to support what Mr. Larson is saying. So why are we putting our kids into danger? Why not put them elsewhere, somewhere that it doesn't hurt thousands of kids? So I'm just asking the city, what does it take to oppose the location of, at least these towers are next to the schools, three schools? I mean, this is not fair. Just think about our kids. You opened up this, this meeting today, we're talking about the schools, how important the kids are, and this is what we are doing to our kids? I don't get it. Thank you.
Karen Kwak?
Hi, I'm Karen Kwak. I went to the monthly meeting of the Metropolitan Water District today and yesterday, and the chair from Glendale was empty for three months in a row. Actually, the chair from Glendale has been vacant since last October for 10 months in a row. Okay, I prepared a graphic. Unfortunately, my PowerPoint slide, on my thumb drive couldn't work because my systems are apparently incompatible with yours, so I hope you can see this. It's pretty much self-explanatory. It shows that Glendale's last representative to MET attended zero meetings this year, two last year, and three in 2017. Okay, that's a total of five of 28 monthly meetings, or an attendance rate of 18%. This is all verifiable data that's in the public domain. This is disappointing because MET provides 65% to 70% of our water, and Glendale has pretty much had no voice in how that water is supplied for the last two and a half Frankly, I believe that I have attended more MET meetings than Glendale's official representative, and Glendale can do better than 18%. No, attendance is not everything. Many of the 38 directors at MET show up and then smile and nod at all, at all meetings, and then rubber stamp every vote that's put in front of them. But it's hard to engage in a substantive discussion of water policy if you're not there at all. Mr. Sananian also did not have any committee assignments, which is unfortunate because that's where most of the policy discussion takes place. The Conservation and Local Resources Committee, for example, has been discussing working on a stormwater capture pilot project set to start in January 2020. I would love to see Glendale participate in a project like this because that would ultimately reduce our dependence on imported water. But for that to happen, Glendale needs to send a representative to MET who will actively engage in committee discussions. Thank you very much.
You?
Irene Varjabedian?
Hello, city council members and Mayor Alan Najarian. Last time, I urged the city council to pass an emergency ordinance regarding the 5G taken after the model of City of Fairfax, and I sent an email to everybody, but my email bounced back. Anyway, Mr. Najarian, last time you said that the FCC decided on that, but there's many, many municipalities are already challenging FCC, so please link, look into that, what other municipalities are doing. So there's, you know, lots of lawyers involved, so it's not just FCC's decision at this point. There's this booklet that you guys got, this, please look seriously into it, there's lots of scientific evidence. FCC doesn't have any doctors or scientists on staff. Thank you for listening. I hope you would consider the people's health before the ATT Corporation making money. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Pamela Ramsayer?
Hello. Thank you all for your service. I am the owner of two rental properties in Glendale that are on Western Avenue, and it's right between Victory and Lake, and it's also right where the 65, not unit, but fix, 65-room apartment, not apartment, hotel building was approved, right on the corner of Winchester and Victory. And last Saturday night, we had a gang shooting, and right, it was toward, it was sort of maybe about four properties up from, from Victory. My property is sort of at the other end. I've been painting the alley out gray, I have the whole alley gray, it looks real nice, and I spend the money. I haven't asked anybody for, to be reimbursed or anything. It's not, not because I'm such a nice person, it's because I want to try to keep the area nice and keep my tenants. And so we, the police department has done a fantastic job. We haven't had graffiti for three months, and I have cameras on my buildings, and I was able to get a video of just before the shooting started when they tagged an area, not a whole lot of area, the... when they tagged an area, not a whole lot of area this, this time, but right near where I could see the tagger going and coming back. And the police were, after the shooting, I was able to look at cameras, and I've sent them to the police, the videos to the police department. And, I mean, the police were there like really fast. And I've got the cameras on the front of the building and on the back of the building going into the alley. And I just, I just want to commend our police department and thank them for what they're doing and want to try to keep the area safe. I don't want to, I don't want to go anywhere. I bought, bought my first property in 1979, and the second one in 1986, when my mother passed, and I moved into her house in Burbank. So, I just want to mention, I want to be proactive, and I want to come to these meetings and know what's going on in Glendale. And thank you for your service, and I'm hoping that we can, we can do something to stop the gang violence and stop the gun violence and stuff. That's all. Thank you.
Ms. Ramsar, you can share your congratulatory remarks with our chief in the back of the room.
Oh, good. I will do that. Thank you.
Shenandoah Fasano?
Good evening. I'm here today to say that I oppose Planned Parenthood opening up in Glendale. And some reasons why is because if God created the child and created the mother, that God has so much love for both of them, that he is willing to take care of them if they choose life. And there's so many facts that I would like to get into sometime next week to back that up. And that if God created life and a baby in the womb, and he has a plan for each person and each soul, how much more would he would support someone who chooses life and the plan for that baby and the plan for that mother to, to choose life and not legalize murder in the womb? Because it is. When we legalize murder, it's because we're trying to hide someone's sins or someone's mistakes, but there's nothing that God can't heal. And that's what God desires to do with every one of us, is heal our brokenness and our hearts and our souls so that we can be whole. But it doesn't matter what sins we've committed or what mistakes. We've all sinned, but what God wants to do is heal us. And by stopping Planned Parenthood, it can give a chance for the healing of those who have committed abortions and can, so that they too can be healed and so that they too can know God's true unconditional love, because that baby is a gift from God, and that could be the unconditional love that they can, that, that, that they might kill if they choose abortion. And that, that, that unconditional love that they long for and desire, they end up killing, and they no longer have it, and then they're missing it in the long run. And therefore, I oppose Planned Parenthood, because the mother is rejecting the unconditional love that God desires for that mother at that moment, no matter what mistakes they have made. God's mercy is through that child. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. Did any fall through the cracks, Laura? No. That concludes our business. Is there new business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Seconded by Ms. Devine. We are adjourned.